Happy New Year to everyone. I'm Dr. Prieta Vandival, Starware Committee Chair of the Audit Committee. I would like to take this time to welcome our newly elected trustees, Lalou Davies and Sean Chibin.
Chibin.
Chibin. And I am elated to have been reelected to represent District 9. The meeting of the Audit Committee for January 10th, 2024 will now come to order at?
2:08 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice, the other committee members, our trustee Lalou Davies, trustee Dave Wilson, and our alternate trustee Sean Chibin. Opportunity for public comments, a citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak on today's agenda. Topics for discussion and/or action. The first agenda item is Item A, Report on Proposed Selection Process for HCC's External Audit Firm. This is a report item, no action is required. Interim Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair, members of the board. This item pertains to the selection process and schedule for HCC's new external audit firm. With your permission, I would like to invite Senior Vice Chancellor Marshall Heinz to the podium to please give this report. Mr. Heinz.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, trustees, chancellor. So we're here today to talk about one item, and that is the renewal of a contract for external auditor. The thing that's different this year is we have a new process for the selection, and I'll walk you through that. And we've got several things to talk through, and I'll be happy to take questions as they come along. It's not a very long presentation. So we want to review the proposed selection process for HCC's new external audit firm for a five-year term. Whitley Penn has been our auditor for the last four and a half years. Their contract expires April 30th. We want to review the proposed selection process schedule. We want to discuss any scope of work or process feedback, and HCC Finance Accounting will then send a link for external auditor RFQ draft to each of you through the Board Services trustees. So I want to talk about the biggest thing I'm telling you about is the selection process in the policies that were created last year and implemented June of 2023. And it's a much different process. So this process allows the Board of Trustees to provide and participate in the selection process. And the Audit Committee can appoint one member to this group for the selection committee. The Board of Trustees can put two additional trustees that are not members of the Audit Committee. And there has to be a maximum of five members total, so that would leave two of the spaces allowed for administrative people. You don't have to recommend three, but that's the max that you can recommend, one from the Audit Committee, two from the regular board, and then two from administration. And so process will work like this. You get to meet today, you hear this, we'll talk a little bit more about the process. You go forward and decide what your decision is about how many board members and trustees you want to have on this. Then come back in February at the Audit Committee, and you provide the information. It goes to the consent agenda, and that list would then be approved. And then those three trustees, or however many you elect to put on that group, has been involved in the process of review of all these solicitations from the beginning. So I'll stop there for a minute if there's any questions about the process itself. No questions? All right, thank you.
Marshall?
Yes, sir.
Could you explain to the new trustees why we do it every five years?
Yes, it takes a while to build a relationship with the organization, and you'll see that as part of the proposed scope of work. And if you changed every year, you would not have much consistency between that, and you'll also see that in the scope that's created. So you can imagine dropping someone in, like if you had to start over with, you know, nine new trustees every year, you would have no carryover, no knowledge. But the changing of it is equally important because you don't want to be too long engaged with the same firm so that they become too comfortable with the client, or the client becomes too comfortable with the audit firm. And that same firm is another point is that they're not allowed to, we can't go ask them questions about other issues. They're here for the audit, and they're here, they work for the board, they report to the board, not to administration. So hopefully that's clear. So these are some of the things that are in the background to what the Board Auditor does. Our annual comprehensive financial report, that's including the single audit, is required by the coordinating board. It's due January 1st, and we just delivered that. Whitley Penn, as I mentioned, is concluding April 30th. Board policy is the new, if you wanted to find it, that's where you would find it. External auditor can be, reports directly to the board. Auditor can not have more than one consecutive term. Audits rotate every five years. Audits created from non-annual audit services, which I just mentioned. Scope of work to meet the state and federal requirements that we have for reporting our operations. And the prior five-year external auditor, last time before Whitley Penn, so almost five years ago, ended up with Grant Thornton. I had to look that one up. Historically, new audit firms begin planning in 2024 upon the board approval of that firm. And then here's the schedule that we talked about going through. This gets us completed by the end of May, so that as Whitley Penn expires, they can start onboarding with the new firm that is selected to work with HCC. And in the process, I kind of walked you through because I thought that was the most important change since last year. And then this is, all preliminary scores will be presented to the Board of Trustees. There's five evaluators I talked about. Preliminary scores were presented to the Board of Trustees, and the Board Trustees that are on that committee, we'll see them earlier, they're the ones scoring them. The board will determine how many finalists will be sent to the final, for final presentations. So this committee that we're talking about putting together, let's say we had 15 respondents, and they only felt like four were worthy of going forward, that committee would make a decision to only bring forward four firms for the whole board to consider. And then when this is all completed by majority vote, the Board of Trustees will select the most qualified firm. Our scoring metrics, you'll see it includes a small business participation goal of 25% and negotiate the fee with the board selected by administration. Once you tell us who's been selected based on qualifications, administration then will take over and negotiate the contract and the actual cost of the work. And I put in here draft, it's still a work in progress, it'll be shortly completed and emailed out to you in a WAB. But this is the draft. Again, there's not much really to add to this type of scope of work. It's very rote in terms of what you do over and over every year, unless the organizations that we report to and we deliver this information to change the rules, then we have to change some of the scope of work. But I did include a draft of what we had in the last version for this board discussion. Here is the scoring matrix that was used. Current evaluation criteria, you get 30%, I'm sorry, not 30%, 30 points. Firms qualifications and experience, demonstrated qualifications of personnel and team, you get 30 points. Proposed approach and methodology. Past performance and references, so examples of similar projects experienced, you would want someone obviously that had done a lot of work with government, higher ed, 15 points, and then small business practices, 25, to give you a total of 100-point score. And most people are used to doing assessments like that and with the points. So I'll stop there. Again, it's not a very long presentation. Your assignment is to decide how many trustees you want on the scoring committee, decide who they may be, whatever number that is. Administration already knows probably who we want to use, most of our top financial people, for how many people you don't fill. And then we can all conclude this, Madam Chair, at the next meeting, and it will become a vote at this meeting, and then we'll go to consent agenda to be confirmed.
Committee members, are there any questions? Trustee Wilson.
On the evaluation criteria?
Yes, sir.
How was that decided and who decided it?
We've talked about internally, but again, this, I look back two terms, so 10 years back, and this is what's been used in scoring.
Out of history for?
Yes, sir.
For the last 10 years?
Yes, sir.
Two terms. Thank you.
Can you perhaps share with us how our scope of services may be affected by the new funding formula that we now have to abide by? Because things are dramatically different now.
In terms of the amount of work they're going to do?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll be talking a little bit about that in the financial report shortly, and then also I'll be talking about it again in the budget workshop, because HB8, House Bill 8, does add a lot of scope of work to make sure that we're tracking along with HB8 and we're not doing it. Similar to the HERF, this year we had a little extra scope, and last year we had scope, and the year before they had a scope because of the HERF grant funding. You know, those were in there as well because they had to track all the revenues coming in and going out. This will be much more complicated because it's a much more complex process to go through the state's new funding model.
Okay, this is good. And can we expect to see an infusion of our, we have a report coming up, report, the enterprise risk assessment, the baseline audit, how we're going to incorporate those risks or mitigating those risks in the new audit for the new audit firm to review as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any other questions, Chancellor?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. I would just simply like to say that our new trustees probably heard Senior Vice Chancellor Heinz make reference to WAB, and that means weekly administrative brief. And that will provide any updates, as was indicated in the report, and any other additional relevant information. Wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Excellent. We have no more questions. Thank you. This was very, very informative.
Thank you very much.
Our new trustees intrigued. Next on the agenda item B, HCC's Enterprise Risk Assessment, Top 10 Risks Baseline Audit. This is a report item, no action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item, and we ask if it's okay if Dr. Burge sits to present so that she doesn't have to use her crutches.
Certainly. Thank you so very, very much, Madam Vice Chair. At this time, I would like to also invite Terrence Corrigan, Executive Director of Internal Audit, and Robert McCracken, Associate Vice Chancellor of Risk Management and Resiliency, to the podium to present the top 10 risks identified in HCC's annual enterprise risk assessment with timeline on personnel, system reporting options, and documentation resources needed to conduct a baseline audit. And of course, Dr. Andrea Burge will report from her desk. Thank you so much. Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, Audit Committee Chair and trustees. So we're going to talk about what it would take to do enterprise risk management baseline audit on the top 10 risks of HCC. So what we'll discuss is what's in the contents here. Basically, how the ERM assessment works, enterprise risk management process, our current internal audit process, and then metrics, and then timeline and reporting. So at this time, I'll pass it over to Robert McCracken, who is our Executive Director over Risk Management, and basically the owner of the enterprise risk management tool that we use to do our enterprise risk management assessment.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of an overview on the enterprise risk management assessment process. So essentially, it is a cycle. It's an iterative cycle. We started this back in 2019, so we have just completed our fifth go-round of the cycle, where essentially we are identifying the risks, assessing the risks, applying some risk treatment or mitigation, and then monitoring and reporting, and then we repeat that process. As we go through that, the real goal of enterprise risk management, as opposed to traditional risk management, is to really identify those risks holistically from a top-down approach because we know that most of the risks that seriously impact an organization are those ones that fall in between lines of responsibility, or those ones that have multiple kind of cascading failures, right? It's not because somebody forgot to sign a form, it's because, or if you take an example of the power outages from a couple of years ago, it's not because gas utilities and gas wells weren't winterized, it's not because utilities didn't have automated systems for shedding load when power was, demand was high, it's not because the grid was, had utilities scheduled for maintenance, it's because you had all of those things at the same time, and you were taking automatically producers of the gas needed to supply the power offline at the same time you need increased power, right? So if you just looked at one of those individually, you wouldn't have noticed that collectively it was going to cause a problem. So when we do the risk identification, one of the things that we do is we interview all of the chancellor's direct reports, because we are trying to get that high-level view, not just from within, deep within the organization, but kind of from above, and so that you can see how things are being impacted from across the organization, as well as those external factors that are impacting us. And once we have that information, then we're scoring those, so that there's some way to kind of objectively, quantitatively define which ones we really need to be paying attention to. And then we score them twice, once in terms of just the raw impact that they can have and how likely they are to happen. A simple one is if you have payroll and you have no controls in place, somebody is going to fraudulently issue payroll checks, right? So you have segregation duties to make sure that the same person who creates an employee can't approve payroll, who can't issue a check. You segregate those duties to limit that risk. So that's your mitigation measures, which then you score that risk again, which hopefully is much lower, right? So traditional financial risk controls you see are very, very evolved. And traditionally, that's where you see most of these controls in place. For the most part, that's what your external auditors look at. Part of what we do is we try to make sure that the DRI, or Directly Responsible Individual, has established mitigation plans that really address the risk, but we're not drilling down into a super, superfine level of detail, right? So broadly speaking, do those plans work? And then do they have ways to measure how well those are working? To do that, they have to work with Dr. Andrea Burge. And then is that process in place, which is where they work with Terry Corrigan and internal audit, to make sure that what we think we're doing, we're actually doing? The goal of all of that ultimately is to make sure that we're focusing attention where we need to, so that we can focus attention and resources. We have to integrate what we're doing with everything else that we're doing. It can't be an add-on or a bolt-on because that's not sustainable. And we have to make sure that the person who has the capacity to modify or change what we're doing is involved in the measurement and reporting, because that's really the goal, is so that we're adjusting our course as we go. So that's really what we're going to be talking about today. Today, we're focusing on the monitoring and reporting portion of that. And so as we go into that, I'm going to turn it over to Terry Corrigan to talk a little bit more about the audit work.
So what I'll discuss with you is our current internal audit process. And I can see that I have the, the first item on here should be the second item. So we basically start with a review of the top risks generated by the annual ERM assessment. And so in doing that, we will share information about the top risks with the trustees. And each year, we request their input into the process of coming up with our internal audit plan. And so from there, we'll end up coming up with the internal audit plan, and it's mainly going to address the top 10 risks that we see facing HCC. So of the top 10 risks that you'll see listed here later on in this presentation, internal audit will be substantially auditing at least a portion of each one of those risks. So, but we don't audit the entirety of a particular risk item. So what we'll do each year is select a specific risk within that top 10 risks, and we typically audit that. And so we get, over the years, we get coverage of the majority of our major risks. So then, when we come up with our audit plan, the board approves the audit, the internal audit plan each year. That is actually required by internal audit standards. It's also required by the Texas Internal Auditing Act. And once the board approves our plan, we are required to post that plan on our internal audit webpage that's public-facing. So everything we do is pretty transparent in our plan. Any trustee, or basically anybody, can go out to the internal audit webpage, and you can see our audit plans for every year since I've been here is posted out there. And then in addition to that, the Texas Internal Auditing Act requires an internal audit function in higher education to post an annual report of the activities of the internal audit department. So you can actually go out to our internal audit webpage, and you can get a complete history of everything we've done in internal audit, and all the observations we've ever had in an internal audit report, and what was done to address those observations. That is all there, and you can see everything since I've been here, which is seven years now. So what we would need to do to address a baseline audit, we would need to identify what specific risks aren't being covered in the plan this year that would need to be included in a baseline audit, and then determine how we're going to test that. And the resources that would be needed to do that would be basically input from every directly responsible individual for those risks, which basically is all my peers here, who are the directly responsible individuals. So and then in addition to that, I understand we want to do some analytics for that as well. So with that, we'll pass the presentation on to talk about metrics, and Andrea Burge, Dr. Andrea Burge, will discuss that.
Thank you. So when we choose our risk management metrics, we want to choose them to do two things. One is to signal potential for the occurrence of adverse events, so the types of conditions that would lead up to an adverse event has to be monitored. And then we need to choose metrics that signal a change in risk. And they can be similar. For example, there may be events like, say, extreme weather that we know could lead to failure of a power grid. If weather is getting more extreme, a single extreme weather event is something that signals potential, whereas repeated extreme weather event says that this is a change in risk that we may want to build into our plans. And the, when we choose our metrics, they really should be things that are readily available. As Mr. McCracken pointed out, you want the people who are managing the risks on a day-to-day basis to have access to these metrics, so to the extent that they can mitigate risks in real time that that is done. And then you want to use the same types of metrics to see what the trend is in terms of the incidence of these risks. And of course, in what we do in higher education, not all data is available on a daily or hourly basis, but ideally, you get basis, but ideally you get readily available indicators that give you timely information about the risks and that lead you to be able to take action to, to prevent risks or mitigate them. Next slide. And so when we want to report on standardized metrics, you want to do it in such a way that allows a comparison over time. And, you know, the time period really does, does vary with the particular risk. And so you need to align the reporting cycle with regular data availability, reporting timelines. You also, you know, one, the place we are at this point is continuing, continually monitoring the metrics that we're using and refining them and the audit schedule and the reporting calendar so that we can work with our DRIs to ensure that risks are being continuously evaluated and mitigated and also report to the board and to, and to our senior leadership about the ways that potential risks are changing and so that we can take the actions that we need.
And so in full disclosure, this is really hard. This is really hard. This is not something that colleges and universities do. I, I don't know if you looked at the current WAB yet. There is, in just one week, I, I think there was enough information and data in that report to probably keep you occupied for a couple of months, right? And that's a small snapshot of what the folks in this room are processing on a regular basis. There's a huge, huge, huge amount of information. Some of it is very current, some of it is from three years ago, some of it tells you what happened five years ago, some of it tells you what happened yesterday. It, it's, it's kind of all over the place. And so doing that is, trying to organize this is very difficult. And we're talking about very different kinds of information, right? We're talking about things like enrollment and revenue, which is in a changing environment where you're talking about enrollment, which is not one thing, but 100 different things, right? And then you're talking about revenue, which is also several different things. And then how those two interact versus an item like number two on the list, which is campus security, which is not just about our physical plant, but what the expectations are around the physical plant and changing state standards around physical plant standards and who's on the physical plant to begin with, right? So as we increase the number of minors and the number of high school students who are on the campus, that changes the expectations around security and the expectations around access. And then how do you integrate that into a building that was built in 1918, right? And so these are not simple issues to kind of put into easy metrics. And so I caution you that at the top of this page, it says draft, right? So please don't throw this back at us a month from now and say, but you said on whatever day today is, January 10th. But this is our attempt to kind of capture this. So on the, on the first column, what you have is the current top 10 list. This was presented to the board back in October. The brief mitigation description, this is out of that interview process that we did and, and the risk assessment process that we did. Traditionally, the reporting is done by the directly responsible interview individual, the DRI, is done outside of the ERM process, right? And so every person on this list, the board gets reports from these folks on, on some frequency and some regular basis. They come in different formats. Some of these are on a monthly basis that you see on the, on the right-hand side, particularly around enrollment and revenue numbers, you see those every month. Some other ones you see in closed session, some you see in open sessions, you see some annually, you see some monthly, you see some quarterly. They come in kind of at different frequencies. What we're trying to kind of capture on here is some of those key reports and, and integrate them into the ERM process because what that allows us to do, number one, is to monitor them and, and potentially change the reporting a little bit, but also to identify a metric that we can monitor over the course of time. That part and that process is going to take us some time because the DRIs have to work very closely with planning and institutional effectiveness to make sure that what we pick is meaningful. Quite frankly, we don't want to rush in and pick a metric that turns out not to tell us what we think it tells us, right? Which is really, really easy to do in this environment. And we don't want to create extra work that doesn't lead us to an outcome, right? So it's important that we be efficient about that. So that, that's essentially where we hope to end up. And so over the course of time, we want to build in this reporting frequency and build it into the regular board agenda calendar, right? Where reports, I know that every October or November, Sharon is going to call me and say, where's your report, right? We know that every July, Terry Corrigan gets a call, where's your report? Because it's due, because it's on the calendar. And so the goal is to just kind of build it into that same process. Any questions?
So first, I want to say thank you for responding. I think I generated a lot of the, the additional, what is it, thickness of the WAB this week. So thank you for, for responding to those questions. It was very helpful. And, and I appreciate y'all sharing the guts of the process by providing that spreadsheet. I'll, I'll apologize for this many times over the next six years, but chemical engineer, so I apologize in advance.
We'll think about it.
But the process that you shared, very similar to what I see in industry. And in my experience, not only have we, do we focus on, you know, validating that the top 10 risks are covered, but also assuring those safeguards that while they may mitigate a lower-level risk, they thread through so many different risks that a failure of that safeguard might cause an outsized impact kind of on the same par of those top 10. And long-winded way of asking this question, which is, are there any mitigation or are there any safeguards that kind of constitute that threading between so many lower or middle-level risks that they would constitute or merit being added to this kind of an audit? We don't have to answer now because that probably requires some digging at homework, but just wanted to throw that idea out there as we get into this process this year.
I, I don't know that I have a clear answer for that. I think it's a good point and something that we, we really need to kind of think through. One of the processes that, that we integrated into the ERM is actually the attestation process, which is kind of a management-by-exception reporting process, right? And so that's really through the general counsel and the compliance process where variances from what was expected are, are kind of bubbling up. And I think part of the root cause analysis that goes into identifying mitigation plans or corrective action plans on that helps get to what you're asking. I don't know that that's a complete answer, but that's off the top of my head, probably as close as we get right now.
I'd like to ask Dr. Burridge if she could comment on that question.
So, you know, looking through the reports, I think that some of the metric, first of all, I think the answer is going to be that there are a few measures that thread through different strands of the risks. Among them, and, and many of those metrics that you see, you see on multiple of, of the lines, like enrollment reflects a whole lot of different things. And so it is something that threads through a lot of the higher and middle-level risks. And so it's something that deserves a lot of scrutiny to understand what it is telling us about how, how the different, how the different risks may be acting and interacting together. The other strand would really be around some of our safety and financial reporting metrics as well that cover different areas of risk for the institution.
I'd like to say that this is, this is a very disciplined, focused, project management approached instrument. It is extraordinarily well-done. You made two chemical engineers very happy, even if trustee Chevyn said, oh, I need more stuff. But what we love about it is that you have covered the concerns that the board had that perhaps we weren't getting enough information to make solid, sound goal decisions for the institution. And this instrument will help us get there. So we are very satisfied at its detail. And I know you guys are going to have to remove some of that detail just so you can survive it. But we also know that the information that you will be presenting to us will give us a clear picture of where we are and more importantly, where we are not. So thank you for this. This is extraordinary and your team, chancellor, your team is amazing and this is, they did this on engineers' level, so that's why we're smiling. Even trustee Wilson is happy because he, he really, he really nails you. But thank you for this because this is going to help us to decide on what this institution is going to look like when we submit our goals to the chancellor for the team to execute. Are there any other questions or comments? Having none, thank you. You all have done a great job and there are no more items on the, on the agenda. So the Audit Committee will adjourn at?
The meeting of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee for January 10th, 2024 will now come to order at?
2:43 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are Dr. Adriana Tamas, trustee Dave Wilson, and alternate trustee Eva Laredo. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Academic and Student Affairs Committee today. We will begin with item A, Honors College Travel. This is a report item, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item presents information on plans for Honors College Travel for 2024. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Perez, Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services to present this item to the board. Thank you, Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, trustees. Every, every January, we try to bring forward to the board the information regarding the Honors College Travel. As you recall, we've been under COVID for the last two years, except that last year we did take the students on, on a trip abroad. So we've, we resumed the abroad travel. And so this is a report to let you know where we are and what we plan to do during the spring break. Before I begin though, if, if there are any of the directors present, I'd like to ask them to stand. They may all be preparing for their classes, so they may not be here. And the executive director is, is also not here. The associate vice chancellor who oversees this is Dr. Ramos. Would you please stand? Thank you. The Honors College Travel program is a key element of the Honors Experience at HCC. The activity provides HCC students with a dynamic opportunity to become immersed in social and cultural contexts, expanding the global understanding in an increasingly interconnected world. Travel activities are aligned to learning outcomes and assignments in courses like Humanities 1301, which prompts students to engage and apply universal skills such as critical thinking, communication, and teamwork. This year, students participating in the Learning Abroad Program will travel to Montreal, Canada. Located in the primarily French-speaking province of Quebec, the city presents HCC Honored Students with an opportunity to experience a unique, vibrant, and cultural history. Currently, 69 students are scheduled to make the trip with activities planned by the Honored College Directors. Based on board feedback last spring, this year, the Honors Travel Experience has expanded to, to include a domestic trip to Washington, DC for students who, who are unable to, to participate in the Learning Abroad Program. The trip will involve 10 students and will be led by the Honors College Director, Dr. Tony Holland. A supplemental, a supplement has been provided to highlight examples of the specific travel activities and how these relate to the learning outcomes and course objectives. The director, the executive director and the directors will continue planning and refining the itinerary and experiences to ensure a robust learning experience before, during, and after the trip. Thank you. And are there any questions? I will show you that, as you can see the presentation, we've increased the number of students. I believe at the last board meeting, the, the board did ask if we could increase it and we have increased it. At this point, we have 69 students going abroad and 10 students traveling domestically. So at this point, are there any questions in regards to the trip?
Questions, trustees? Oh, trustee Laredo?
I know I missed the presentation, but I've been with y'all through this, with this group, Honors Group, and, and they've always done really well. We've never had any bad reports about them wherever they've gone. And also, it's a great experience for them, so I, I hope that we can continue it.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Ford Fisher?
Great, thank you so very much, Madam Chair. And I'd like to thank the board also for the support of the students who travel abroad. This experience does indeed help to enrich their experiences and it expands their view of the world as well. One of the things that we are proposing to do now is to expand our Honors College experience to the Coleman College of Health Sciences and also to the Online College. And this will provide us even more opportunities for our students. So I want to thank you so very, very much for that opportunity to share that information.
Thank you.
And I do want to add for trustee Laredo, I believe you were, you were the trustee that was concerned about the domestic travel for those students who could not travel abroad and we have planned a trip this spring break.
I saw that. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item B, International Student Services and Programs. This is a report item, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, trustees. This item provides an update on the International Student Services programs. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Via Gran-Glover, President of the Southeast College and interim Vice Chancellor of Student Services, to come to the podium to present the report. Dr. Via Gran-Glover.
Thank you, Chancellor. Trustees, new trustees, welcome. This presentation serves as our annual update to you on our international student population. The slides provided offer insights into our enrollment trends, persistent rates in awarded degrees and certificates spanning the last three years, 2000 to 2023. And as we all know, despite the challenges for all our students, especially international students following the pandemic, there is, we are seeing a positive upswing in our Fall 2003. We saw a upswing in our Fall 2003 enrollment. Our proactive engagement initiatives cater to the specific needs of our F1 students, ensuring ongoing enrollment and fostering student success. I'd like, now I'd like to invite Associate Vice Chancellor for Special Programs and Success, Dr. Holloman Douglas, to the podium to provide you with more details on our update. Dr. Holloman Douglas?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, and Executive Cabinet. Thank you for your time today. Before I begin, I would like to recognize Dr. Nithi Samantha Nathan. Dr. Samantha Nathan has served as Director of International Student Programs for the past six years. His deep understanding of global affairs aids HCC in effectively navigating the complexities of supporting and advocating international students. Dr. Samantha Nathan, please stand and be recognized on behalf of yourself and the International Student Programs team. Now let's explore the global reach for Houston Community College. As you can see on this map, HCC's international family spans multiple continents, creating a microcosm of the world within our campus. Each gold highlight represents the home country for many of our students. It's a powerful testament to the global nature of our academic community and the richness of the cultures that make up the college. Now let's delve into the specifics of our international population. These are the countries that make up the diversity of our student community at HCC. As you can see from the graph, each bar represents the number of students from the respective countries. Interestingly, Vietnam holds the number one spot with approximately 395 students boasting the largest number of international students at HCC. This is not only a reflection of the global appeal of the institution, but also a result of the significant Vietnamese communities in our service areas. On this slide, we examine the progression of our enrollment over the past few years, particularly during the challenging times presented by the global COVID-nineteen pandemic. While it's evident that international student enrollment had its own significant challenges in terms of travel bans and visa delays, despite the obstacles, we are pleased to share a positive trend. From Fall two thousand and twenty-two to Fall two thousand and twenty-three, we have witnessed a substantial increase in enrollment, specifically an addition of two hundred and twenty-seven students, marking a growth of about nine point eight percent. The upward trend signifies more than just numbers. It represents a confluence of factors, positive word of mouth from our students, ease of travel restrictions, and HCC's unwavering commitment to inclusivity, all converging to create a welcoming and dynamic environment for our international students. Here is a look at our annual enrollment trends. As you can see, in two thousand and twenty, total enrollment peaked at about eighty-five, at over eighty-five hundred students. However, the following year brought a significant decrease to about sixty-two hundred students due to the effects of the pandemic specifically concerning travel restrictions and visa issuance. We continued our efforts to support students by adjusting their anticipated start terms, maintaining communication with prospective students who had difficulty entering the country, and offering a number of virtual Q and A sessions to keep students informed and encouraged about studying at HCC. Thankfully, our efforts paid off. We're excited to see a positive reversal in two thousand and twenty-three with enrollment climbing back up to five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two students as of this past spring, November, sorry. F-one students, as per federal requirements, must maintain a full-time enrollment to meet their visa status obligations. This crucial regulation plays a pivotal role in the consistently high persistence rates we observe in addition to the retention interventions the college provides. Looking at this chart, you will notice that our fall-to-fall persistence rates have remained consistently above sixty percent from two thousand and twenty, from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two. More impressive are our fall-to-spring persistence rates ranging from seventy-six percent to eighty-five percent. Shifting our focus to F-one student achievements, we are proud to highlight their significant success in earning awards by cohort years. You will notice that a small percentage of our international students actually graduate within their first year based on their credentials of choice. But as time passes, we see that that percentage increases substantially each year. For the two thousand and twenty cohort, thirty-five percent of students have earned some type of award within three years. The two thousand and twenty-one cohort continues this trend with twenty-five percent of students achieving an award within just two years. Even for our most recent two thousand and twenty-two cohort, thirteen percent of students have earned awards in the short span from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Considering the fluctuation of our enrollment in recent years, we can appreciate the exceptional achievements of our international students and their unwavering commitment to success. HCC prioritizes international student success with targeted interventions. We start with a mandatory F-one new student orientation. We equip students with crucial information on academic integration, F-one status maintenance, advising, and campus life. Our International Student Ambassadors Program fosters engagement, peer-to-peer engagement, and showcases campus resources, cultural events, and community connections. And then our Counseling and Ability Services Department is one of our partner offices that plays a major role in addressing challenges pertinent to F-one students in terms of cultural acclimation, study strategies, and mental wellness. So as you can see, we have a, we've created an intentional environment to help our international students thrive. Committed to global outreach, HCC engages prospective international students through strategic initiatives. This slide highlights a few of the key partnerships implemented last year. The Houston Tabernacle broadened our reach to a largely immigrant congregation. The Good Neighbor Scholarship, provided by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, supports twenty-one students from the Western Hemisphere. We had successful virtual open house events organized by the District Recruitment and Outreach Office, which drew in eighty-five international students last year. Finally, our video campaign entitled "Real Journey" garnered one point eight million social media hits and features testimonials from F-one students, their families, and our esteemed HCC faculty. These efforts helped to increase our enrollment and enhanced our brand appeal to international communities. This concludes my presentation. Thank you again for your time and support of international student success.
Any question, trustees, comments, feedback? Trustee Laredo?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm glad to see that we've come a long ways from when we, since I've been on the board. And we, I always felt that we needed to reach out to them, make them feel at home, and do activities with them, and more open houses. So I'm glad to see that that's going on. And I know that that's gonna continue to increase by word of mouth. The other thing, I was, my question is that, how long does the student have their F-one? How long is their permission to be here to study?
So we renew their I-twenty each year. We have to renew their I-twenty. But basically, for whatever degree they're coming for, they have that length of time. So typically, for an associate's degree, they would have three years. But of course, our Director of International Student Programs could address that in even more detail.
Well, that's good to know because that way they know that they have that timeline and they really need to work hard at getting their degrees done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Trustee Wilson?
How many international students did we have ten or twelve years ago?
That's a great question, and I would have to look at the data to answer that question effectively. I'm not for sure. Would you like for me?
Six thousand sounds about right from my poor memory.
Yeah, trustee Wilson, when I was Associate Vice Chancellor, you're correct. So it wasn't ten years ago, I would say around six to seven years ago. Nithi, what our numbers were?
We had a high of about six, so you got four more to get, let's get them.
That's right, there you go, that's a goal, that's our goal.
We had eight, the highest we were was eight thousand.
Okay, are there any more comments? If not, we will move to item C, Spring two thousand and twenty-four Enrollment Update. This is a report item, no action is required. Chancellor will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm delighted to ask that Dr. Andrea Boraj give the report from where she sits, please, Dr. Boraj. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, trustees, I'll see if we can get the enrollment report up. Okay. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay. So today, I'd like to talk a little bit about enrollment and really make sure that that we have a chance to introduce all of our new trustees to the terms that we use when we talk about enrollment. When we talk about enrollment at HCC, we talk about academic careers. And we typically refer to three to four academic careers. The first one is the SCH career. This is our traditional credit enrollment. These students can earn associate's degrees, traditional certificates, and they also earn credits that transfer to four-year institutions. Second career is our continuing education. That's CEU. CEU is historically referred to as funded non-credit or continuing education, and it includes short-term workforce credentials and apprenticeships. Now, there's definitely overlap between the SCH, the credit, and the CEU programs. For example, students can complete police and firefighting programs in both of those careers, depending on their goals, their needs, where they are. The third career combines our adult high school and our non-credit. We call this non-funded non-credit, and it includes things like our adult basic education, GED, much of our ESL, adult high school, corporate college, community education, the Health Professions Institute, and a lot of vastes in this career as well. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of the other types of programs that we offer. Now, the reason it's non-funded non-credit is because the programs in adult high school and NCR, which stands for non-credit, are not reported to the Coordinating Board by the Coordinating Board's choice. So when we report that enrollment, we are reporting students to you who we are expected not to include in those reports. The SCH and CEU enrollments, on the other hand, are reported to the Coordinating Board, and those are the two careers that generate our credentials of value. So in Fall two thousand and twenty-three, we did quite well. And actually, from the time that we submitted this report to now, our enrollment increased very slightly because of enrollment at the end of December. And the final enrollment for Fall two thousand and twenty-three stands at fifty-six, four, three, four. So the credit enrollment, final credit enrollment, was forty-nine, seven, oh, six, which was a three and a half percent increase over the previous years. The funded non-credit, or CEU, ended at three thousand, four hundred and thirty-four, down slightly about two percent. And the unfunded non-credit was three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six. Again, a slight increase because of students who enrolled at the very end of December. And that's something that's important to know. You know, in a traditional four-year, we think about students applying in the spring. They are, you know, they're admitted, and then they enroll. In HCC, we allow students and encourage students to enter throughout the semesters as our new terms begin. And this is particularly pronounced in our non-credit careers. In those careers, they're very short-term programs. And if students would like to start a workforce program in November or even late December, if we have, as we have the demand, we accommodate that. So instead of being a very sudden increase around one date, our enrollment increases steadily throughout the term. Now, the vast majority of it is still our credit enrollment at eighty-eight percent, with our other two careers hitting about six percent. You will, you may have noticed the numbers don't quite add up, and that's because there are about point six percent of students who appear more than once. They're in both a credit career and a non-credit career at the same time. So the next two slides look at the trend. And you can see that as the pandemic hit, we really took a very pronounced decline, but we've been steadily re-engaging our students. And we see, especially with this spring, many of the students we lost during the pandemic are now starting to return. So we've had a lot of luck re-engaging and a lot of success re-engaging our stopouts. And I should not have used the word luck because it is really a testament to our faculty and staff and the campaigns that they do to reach out to our stopouts that have helped us successfully re-engage those students. For our CEU and non-funded non-credit, we also have been increasing those careers. The unfunded non-credit ended up about three and a half percent up from last year, whereas our CEU was down very slightly. Heading into spring, I'm gonna give you updated numbers from spring as well. Our total enrollment as of this morning was forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five, up by almost sixteen and a half percent over last spring. Our SCH credit enrollment is now forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five students, up sixteen percent. And it's been about nine days since this report. So that really reflects the work that our staff does as soon as we get back to continue, and even over the break in many cases, to continue engaging our students. You can see that really striking is Spring two thousand and twenty is a term the pandemic hit. And our enrollment in spring shows many similarities to our pre-pandemic enrollment, which again is a testament to the work that the faculty and staff are doing. Our, I didn't spend a lot of time talking about the reasons our CEU enrollment may have been down slightly in the fall, and that was intentional. Our CEU staff and faculty have been working to re-engage the students and look at what's, you know, how we can attract students to those programs that do result in those credentials of value. And you can see that our CEU enrollment is up substantially at this point over pre-pandemic enrollment at, and today it stands at two thousand and ninety-eight students. Our non-funded non-credit is also up now at one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight, up eleven and a point two percent, and CEU is up thirty percent right now over last year. So a set of questions we get fairly frequently is, why do the reports that we give not match the Coordinating Board reports? And that's actually a very deep question. It has to do with differences in reportings. We actually give the numbers to the Coordinating Board, so they're reporting numbers that we report to them. But there are differences in both the time period and the students who are reported. A big difference in the annual enrollment is that we report the non-funded non-credit enrollment to you because the adult education literacy, the corporate college ESL, that's an important part of our mission, and it's important, you know, it's part of our budget. It's part of the work that we do. The second reason is because, to get very quick data, the Coordinating Board asks us to report in the beginning of the semesters the students who are present at the start of the regular term. However, we have, we, students continue to enroll in those later terms, so those students do not appear on the reports for that term. We report them in the next term. And when you hear the term flex enrollment, the Coordinating Board talks about this as flex enrollment. That's what they mean. They mean the students who have enrolled after the census date, which is the date you are in that class for good, no more dropping without a W. The students who enroll after that census date who will appear on the next term's state report. But that difference means that when you look at fall enrollment from the Coordinating Board, you're looking at a different set of students than the fall enrollment that we give you at the end of the term. When we give you that end-of-term enrollment, it is every student who came to us in the term. Finally, is that institutions are directed not to report students who are taking only distance education courses delivered outside the state. What that means is that the Coordinating Board, this goes back to contact hours. The Coordinating Board reimbursed us for contact hours for students in previous funding models. However, the state of Texas was not interested in reimbursing us for students who lived in New York and were taking courses in New York. They were interested in supporting the education of Texas students. So the historical, so the historical rules has us report to them students whose residence is, are in Texas. And especially as online distance education grows, this means that we are serving students who are not on the Coordinating Board enrollment. And those three, those three bullets are the three major reasons for differences in those reports. There are others as well, but they're a much smaller percentage. Questions?
Any question, trustees? Dave Wilson?
On page nine for the spring, that thirty-six thousand, three sixty-nine is above thirty-six thousand, three thirty in the spring of twenty. And I'm pretty impressed with that number. And I realize it, and I think my fellow board members realize it, that it wasn't because of us sitting up here that that happened. It was because of the hard work of everybody out there pulling together as a team and making that happen. And I'm not gonna say I get any of that credit, but I am gonna say the credit belongs to the people in this room and anything this board can do to support the people in this room. You got my vote?
Thank you.
Well said, I agree with everything trustee Wilson said. Any other comments? The mic?
I figured they were hazing me, didn't tell me how to turn on the mic, but that's okay. So sometimes I say I'd rather be lucky than good, and that's perfectly okay. Do you get feedback from students about the ease of getting enrolled? Do you get feedback from students about the ease of getting enrolled with HCC? Do we have any reactions to that?
We do, and we recognize that students do say that it's difficult, and there are a lot of initiatives which my, sorry, which my tablemates can talk about as well as our interim chancellor. What we also hear, though, is about the dedication of our faculty and staff. For example, the last student I interviewed was one who had transferred from a four-year institution, and that student told us that in her two years at that institution, she did not feel like anyone had known her name, and she felt like everyone she talked to at HCC cared about her. So we certainly have work to do, but we also have a staff and a faculty that is more dedicated to our students than any faculty and staff I've ever seen. And so, you know, if I was a betting person, I would bet on us.
I'll just add that I think we might enhance our luck with efforts that we can make to improve the process, starting with the website. I've attempted enrolling for a course. It's not easy, so.
Yeah, absolutely. That is a point that is very well taken and is frequently, you know, it's a topic of both discussion and action for us.
I have one more on the, on the last slide you were talking about with the enroll, and it's a bit of a hypothetical, but let's say we had some credential of value that students from the Northeast, because they grew up surfing, and it's to work on LNG export terminals. If we're complete hypothetical, would, how would the state view that if they were taking this credential because they could only work at the port, but they needed that to come work for that employer? Might that be an argument that we make about getting credit for that?
You know, it's very, it's a very interesting question. We actually asked the coordinating board if we could report credentials of value for students who did not live in the state, and they said, yes, we could. So we did, could include those students. We cannot include them on enrollment reports, but we can include them on degree reports. And so we will be watching that policy-wise as the state refines the rules. It's certainly an argument that we, we could make, and we want to make it in conjunction with industry.
Dr. Ford Fisher?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and of course, thank you very much, trustee Yumitun for the question. I think that the response that Dr. Burge made is really very appropriate. And of course, Dr. Villagrand Glover, being the interim vice chancellor for Student Services, and the members of the team are working with the CEC and all of the staff at the colleges to ensure that we have a place at the table to serve our students at each one of the colleges. And so everyone is on point, making sure that they are present, whether it's financial aid, advising, counseling, cashiering, et cetera, at the colleges to make sure that when students come in, that they're able to welcome them and serve them. We know that customer service is also critically important, primarily because we have a high percentage of first-time-in-college students, and so we have stressed that also. There have been discussions about a CRM and how we move forward with that. That is still being discussed, and we're looking into that. However, we know that we cannot wait for a CRM to be acquired for us to use. So what we are doing is using our staff to make sure that we can streamline the enrollment processes for our students, and that is why we have staff on campuses as well, readily available to support our students. But one of the things that we're doing also is making sure that we are now conducting those care calls for our students. All of the members of our team are involved in that process. That is one of the processes that was used earlier to ensure that we were able to reach out to those students once they have finally gotten into the classes, that we make sure that they have paid. So with the payment plans, we're making sure that our students are not purged from the system because of non-payment. And we've looked at various ways to be able to support them in that effort as well. But we know that on the front end, making that process easier is critically important. And we've talked about having a five-step approach, if at all possible, to making sure that we can get our students into the classes from beginning to end, to get them into the classes. And so that's one of the things via the work that Dr. Villagrand Glover is doing now with Dr. Perez in order to make sure that we can establish that for the spring term to make it a whole lot easier for students, because it really is rather complicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Laredo?
Thank you for that. It's good to hear that, that we are going to try to make it more streamlined and easier for the students. Another thing that I'd like to see is that, I know in looking at those numbers on page nine, that we did have a drop, and we have to remember that the colleges were closed. And even up until last year, we still have some areas that are closed. What I would like for us to see, to do, is that to have all hands on deck. It's, it's that time, you know, we should not have campuses closed for X number of reasons. Everybody, if they're getting a salary, they're getting paid, they need to be on their jobs. There's, the worst thing is for a student to come in the door and nobody's there to help them. Nobody's there to answer their questions. Guess what's going to happen? They go make a U, go out, and don't, and we lose them. They don't come back, you know, because there's still many students that, that need that prodding in the door and go and help them, and, and so I like for us, I like to see that. And I know that once we're all there and hands on deck, our numbers are really going to go up, but thank you.
Trustee Davies? Oh, I'm sorry. Did, did, I'm sorry. Sean, was your hand up?
It was, but I can wait my turn, it's all right.
No, I was going down, trustee, but your hand was up.
I just want to pile on with congratulations. A 20% jump in, in one year on year is no slouch accomplishment. That's amazing, so good work, everybody. It's phenomenal to see. My question for you is, I know data hasn't been published yet, so that may just be the answer. But I'm curious if you have a sense for how our increases in enrollment compare with our large urban peers? In unofficial, kind of off-the-record conversations with your peers at those various organizations, are they seeing the same enrollment increases? Or did they also put their running shoes on like we did?
The last time we had a conversation, we're kind of in the middle, which is about what, I think what you'd expect, but we'll see once the numbers are published. We have one of the higher flex enrollments of the, of the institutions traditionally, so our numbers tend to change a little bit later than theirs.
Trustee Wilson, I see that look on your face. You don't have a comment? Okay. Chancellor? No? Did you have another one? All right.
I know, I forgot one.
Okay. Yes, trustee Laredo.
As, as we're saying that our numbers are up, I just want to toot our horn that HCC has, if they're still not the number one in international students, we're up there. So kudos to everyone for that.
Thank you. All right, the Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting is adjourned, Dan?
3:20 PM.
The meeting of the Marketing Committee for January 10th to 2024 will come to order at 3:21 PM. This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. I'm trustee Dave Wilson, committee chair. The other committee members are trustee Charlene Johnson and Dr. Adriana Temes. Alternate is Gabriel Sheban's daddy, Sean Sheban. A citizen deserving to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing as citizens form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with Board Service Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak. Topics for discussion and/or action begin with item A, marketing, community engagement, and district sponsorship. This is a report item, no action. Dr. Ford Fisher?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item provides an update on our marketing, community engagement, and district sponsorship to support the mission of the college. So with your permission, Mr. Chair, I invite Dr. Ramel Young, Chief of Staff and Vice Chancellor, to the podium to present the item.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor. Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to provide to you today a marketing and community engagement report. I'll start by saying that we had a great celebration this morning at 11 o'clock, and we had two new trustees to come on. And since that time, from a marketing perspective, your, that announcement has been placed throughout the media population here in the Houston community, and also throughout the Facebook. Just look on Facebook and you'll see yourselves and your families pulled together. I also wanted to share with you, as you drive around the city, you'll see signs, signage, or you may see on the television or you're hearing on the radio the slogan that says "Real World Education." And so the "Real World Education" tagline is the summation of all the thoughts that have come from trustees, from faculty and staff, from students. We had input into creating that, that message. And so that is the message that we carry forward into the community that is put together with the collective thought of a lot of people. Discussion topics today include a marketing overview. This snapshot, we provided this to Board Services back in December, so the numbers have shifted since that time, but I'll be able to update you on those. Community engagement. We haven't done a lot of community engagement updates today, so we'll focus principally on community engagement to share with you what we're doing, particularly since post-COVID. HCC, I'd like to say is back. We are in the community, we are actively engaged through town hall meetings, you name it, we're doing it. We're working with the Greater Houston Partnership, the Greater, the Black Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber. We're in the community, and you'll see some of that. And district sponsorships, we recognize the value and need to be able to work with others in the community who are doing things that are similar to what we're doing or advancing initiatives that we advance, like education and other things that enhance the quality of life for our students and for the people that we serve in the region. And so I wanted to share with you that we have three entities that we work with to bring forward the marketing that you see, the "Real World Education" tagline. This is our marketing ad agency, Callberg, our marketing creation team from Outreach Strategies, and our multicultural campaigns that you see are done by Gilbreth. And then there are hosts of marketing and communications professionals at our colleges who are sending out information with regard to the types of courses, programs that we're providing throughout the, the region. Our campaign goals include building brand awareness, driving recruitment, increasing retention, increasing regard for HCC, increasing business and community partnerships, and driving philanthropic support. This is where I commonly start. In no way do we represent that marketing is the sole reason for any favorable movement and enrollment or, or any other thing, but I would say to you, it's probably reasonable to conclude that we are a contributing factor to those things happening. To not be in the marketplace would likely be a mistake, and you'll see some of that on the back end of the presentation, or at least maybe one of the documents we sent yesterday, where you can see where Lone Star is and how their, their marketing, SandJack, those are the folks in our region, and so we pay close attention to what they're doing. Likewise, we pay attention to what's going on with, with the larger institutions like San Antonio, Tarrant County, Dallas, to see what they're doing, how many people they have in their shop, who they're working with, who they're not working with, how they're reaching their target audiences, to get a flavor of where we should be and not be, should not be. So I would ask if, Callberg, Earlins, are you in the room? If you come up and just kind of join me. We're using things like broadcast, so TV, cable, radio, digital, outdoor, and print media to connect with our audience. And so, oh, there you are. All right, thank you. I'm going to ask Earlins Portillo to just kind of walk us through what we've been doing, and then I'll come back in just a moment.
Good afternoon. So here we have an overview of the media channels that we've been running over the past year, and so we've broken it out into four groups, starting with broadcast. So broadcast includes your TV, cable, and radio, and the purpose of broadcast is to support a market-wide awareness push, especially in the weeks leading up to each semester start date. So for example, for the spring, we know classes start on Tuesday the 16th, and we started our TV, radio, and cable buys in late November, early December, just knowing that for, for our audience, it's, you know, they're focusing on their finals or thinking about their resolutions, focusing on what they're wanting to do in the next year. So we want to make sure that we are in the market, they're seeing our ads, and they're thinking like, oh, yeah, I need to make sure I sign up for my next classes for, for the spring coming up at HCC. And so the great thing about broadcast is that we're able to align ourselves with some high-profile programming, especially when it comes to television. So with TV, some of the programming that we purchase that is high-profile, we are partnering with the Rockets. You may see our ads in some of those games. We've done some college basketball and other premium, our primetime television. Also partnering with, running our ads on some of the networks that over-index with our audience, making sure that we're still reaching our audience where they're watching television, cable, listening to the radio. And then with radio, it just helps increase our frequency, just because radio's a little bit more efficient when it comes compared to TV, so we're able to buy more ads and have that higher frequency to help build that brand awareness. Up next, we have outdoor, and so with outdoor, we have our fabulous billboards all over town in premium placement for the spring semester. We are doing a short buy with movie theater advertising, just knowing that people are going back to the movies, or we have some great movies come out in December. So we wanted to make sure that, again, we are where the audience is, and we're wanting to capture them and, you know, keep HCC top of mind. And so the great thing about outdoors, you can't turn it off, like when you're driving down the highway, you can't, like, I don't want to see this billboard, it's right there, it's in your face, et cetera. And so that's why we appreciate outdoor. It's also a good option because compared to the other media groups, it does give us the highest reach, and it is the most efficient media group compared to the other three. And again, we want HCC to be highly visible in the market. Our next group is digital, and so with digital, we have several channels. We have audio, so that includes your, you know, Pandora's, your Spotify's display, so the banner ads you see when you're browsing like ESPN.com or Houston Chronicle.com, et cetera. Search anybody, you know, who goes to Google and looks up community, community college or sign up for classes, et cetera. We want to make sure that HCC is when that is within that top page of results, ideally, hopefully at the top, so that we're, we're the first, you know, option so that they could click on our, our website and, you know, learn more, et cetera. For social, we're running on various channels, we're running on Meta, just knowing that Meta has a high usage within our audience. Other popular platforms that we're running campaigns on are Twitch and Snapchat. And then finally, with video, we are running ads on CTV OTT, so that's the modern way of, you know, watching television. So if you're, you know, wanting to catch up on the latest episode on Hulu, you'll hopefully see our HCC ads. Same with, we're also running ads on YouTube. And so with digital, compared to broadcast and outdoor, where it's a little bit more broader, with digital, we're specifically focusing on the core audience. So we're using data, we're making sure that we're, you know, using demographic, geographic, focusing on those HCC service area zip codes, we're using behavioral, right? If they're looking at keywords, if they're going to certain websites. So we're making sure that we're being mindful about who we're reaching on digital, especially with a younger audience, we're spending a lot of time on digital, so we're, we're being smart about how we're executing our buys and how we're reaching our audience. And so obviously, the ultimate goal with digital is to make sure that we capture them, they go to the website, and hopefully convert and, you know, apply or, you know, register for classes at HCC. And then finally, with print, we want to make sure that we're still talking to our multicultural audiences, so we are running ads in, you know, Asian, Black, Hispanic publications, and I believe for some of these ads, we are talking to them in their language. So with our Asian publications and Hispanics, it's in their language versus running ads in English. Here, we have our summary of our results for the summer and fall semester, so that's when we launch our Real World Education campaign. So, that's when we launched our Real World Education campaign. So, in total, we were thrilled that we were able to deliver over 200 million impressions in the market during the months of May through August. So, during those months, we ran TV, cable, radio, outdoor, print, digital, pretty much everything I mentioned on the previous slide, with the exception of no movie theater advertising. And like Ramel said, we're, we believe that marketing did play a part in helping contribute to that 3% growth in enrollment that we saw for the fall 2023 semester. And just for those who aren't aware, an impression is every time someone sees an ad, so if you're watching TV, you know, you're watching the Emmys, you see the HCC ad, that's one impression. You're driving down the billboard, you have three people with you, that would be three impressions, because each person saw the ad, et cetera. So, yeah, so in the end, extremely thrilled that we were able to deliver such a huge number of impressions in the market, and that we saw success with the fall 2023 semester enrollment.
So, that time period that we've just mentioned, May through August, is through, May through August. For the fiscal year 2223, it's 477 million. So, by the, when we submitted this, we didn't have those numbers, so 477 million impressions. I won't take you through this, I'm going to move you directly to community engagement. So, community engagement is not something we've reported on here in the recent past, and we wanted to give you a sense of what's going on there. Our purpose and our, our goals with strategic engagement or community engagement is to engage with grassroots constituents, connect with key stakeholders, cultivating community and industry partnerships, and amplifying the message, marketing and, of our marketing communication messages. From '22 to '23, we had 21 events. And let me, hats off to Sheila Briones, because she manages this area, and so, she's not here today, but hats off to Sheila and a host of people who assist her. But 21 events, and the estimated number of people that we came into contact with through those events, whether it's galas, chamber award events, parades. In fact, we'll do a parade on Monday, the MLK Parade, 92,000, just 92.4,000 people. 10 events for the '23-'24 period, so since September, September 1 through the, this period, we've had 10, 10 events, 20,000 people or 21,000 people so far. And this is in the current fiscal year. College-sponsored events, those are events like town halls, ribbon-cutting events, MOU signings, recruiting events. 131 of those have taken place through, from September through December 30, 2023. That's '23 through '24 fiscal year. So, 21,000 or 22,000 people with whom we've come in contact with is estimated. And this is just a sampling of some of the things that we're doing in terms of community engagement. This was at the holiday, the lighting of the Christmas tree, Star of Hope, the town hall meetings that many of you have been participating in. Just look closely, and you'll see your smiling face there. Digital access centers, so we've had events that showcase those digital access centers that are providing an opportunity for students to study. District sponsorships. The goals there are to improve brand recognition and reputation, strengthen the existing, and foster new relationships, promoting advertising, ensure that we are moving forward on our competitive advantage, advancing the mission and vision of the institution. So, here, there's a sampling of sponsored categories. We had 40 sponsored events, and you see the names here, Rice Kinder, Radio, Houston Rodeo, TSU. 23% of the dollars that we have were expended on educational organizations, 31% on community organizations, and 46% on chambers of commerce. And so, there were 40 events from '22 to 2023, $88,000 is our budget, or $86,000. And in the current year, we've gone through 10 events at the tune of $35,000 spent thus far. And so, we're connecting with, with the folks in the community. Again, we are having parades that we're engaging in, the Greater Houston Partnership event that many of you attended, where we were connected with Rice and other institutions. This is one of the premier Greater Houston Partnerships education sponsorship activities. And that is our presentation. We are available for any questions that you might have. We thank you for listening to us.
Any questions from the committee?
No, I just want to commend you, because community outreach is something that's very dear to me. So, I appreciate you going out to the communities and the diversity of the print and the radio ads that you're doing out there. So, I appreciate that. Just continue, continue with it, so we can continue to get the word out and increase the brand, so we can remove the stigmatism of going to a community college. So, all of this recognition is just making us look really cool with the kids. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Please, trustee LaRosa.
I too. I echo that, and that I really am in HCC when you're out there and they see the name, all those little things, the trinkets that we give out, those help as well. And so, continue to do good, so.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Davies.
Question, is our higher priority on branding or marketing?
I would say that our branding is exceptional, HCC, in terms, people know who we are, particularly in the region, but we're not just doing it for in the region. We're doing things, you know, in other places. There's the Chronicle of Higher Education, so, but we're principally focused on the marketing to attract students to come to HCC. That's where we're, we're expending most of our time and effort, on the things that you heard Earlins talk about, so, marketing.
So, the follow-up to that, since it is marketing, it might be to get a sense of who our core audience is. You used that term a few times.
Our target audience.
Our core audience is what she said. So, I'm interested in learning who our core audience is.
And we have that information. We did a survey at the outset of developing the, the ad campaign. We went in and identified who that audience is, where they live, what zip codes they're in, whether it's in the southwest region. We're serving 630 some odd square miles of, of the HCC service delivery area, and in each pocket, each corner of the, of the service delivery area are, are the folks that we're serving. And so, yeah, we have that information.
I don't need 30 pages, by the way, just like one page.
Understood. Got you. That one pager is what you'll get.
I have a question about social media and which services we choose to participate with. On the supplemental information that y'all shared, impressive coverage across a bunch of different services, but TikTok wasn't there. And I'm this introductory into asking, how are y'all monitoring which social media services? It's an incredibly fluid space and landscape.
I'll, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Which to target, which to phase out of, so that we're focusing our money where, again, our core audiences are versus piling in, just as, for instance, if Pandora is full of, you know, older folks like myself, as an elder millennial, that wouldn't be interested in community life, that we'd be spending it maybe in a place where you're not, your core audience isn't spending time online.
And I'll yield to, to Earlins on that, but I'll, I'll go back to your, you mentioned TikTok, and it's visibly not there. And actually, maybe you can, my recollection is that it's prohibited statutorily, and I think there was some, some edict from, from the governor to be cautious about how we use TikTok, so we don't use it at all. And that's, that's what's driving the decision there. But with regard to the other questions, if you don't mind, Earlins.
Yeah, of course. So, prior to launching each fiscal year, we look at audience research, we also look at past performance. And so, we are, especially in the digital space, we're very mindful of flighting and, you know, certain platforms, certain channels, you know, me, like Meta, right? For example, Meta includes Facebook and Instagram. Facebook is an older audience, and Instagram is a younger audience. Same with Snapchat is a much younger audience. Twitch definitely skews more towards the male user. And so, we look at all of that, and for the most part, we make sure to flight and, you know, come up with budgets that make sense leading up to the semester, to each semester. So, to give you a quick overview on how we do our flighting for the year, we pretty much run Meta and search throughout the year in the digital space. And then, for the other channels, we heavy up two to three months prior to start building that awareness with our audience. And so, that's how we, we look at it. We look at performance, and we look at consumer consumption and seeing what makes sense and knowing that, you know, here, here we have our core audience on, on the slide. So, it's adults 18 to 34, especially for digital. This is what, actually, for our entire media campaign, we use adults 18, 34 as our primary audience. So, within that audience, we're, you know, we're targeting multicultural. So, even with our broader buys, so with TV, right, we're buying, or TV and radio, right, we're buying certain stations to make sure we're, we're still talking to that multicultural audience, so we're buying Spanish-language station, we're buying urban, et cetera. And same with, like, digital. We, we do it programmatically, which I'm not sure how aware or if you guys know what that is, but we're not, for the most part, on anything that's not social. We're going after the user and where they go. So, we're not just buying a buy directly with, like, ESPN.com, because maybe a handful of our audience may go to that website, but the majority doesn't make sense. So, what we do is we partner with digital vendors, and we make sure that we are following the user wherever they go. So, we're focusing on the user and making sure that we're serving them the ad. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Earlins. Thank you very much. Seeing as how we're running over a little, I'll adjourn the meeting of the Marketing Committee at 3:43. Thank you all.
Thank you, trustees. Welcome to trustees. We look forward to working with you.
The special meeting for January 10, 2024 will now come to order at 3:45 PM. All for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the Hearing of Citizens form 40, I'm sorry, 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. No citizens are signed up to speak. Is there a motion to approve item A, ratify approval of resolution in memoriam of Tom Jean Wilson Linton, my mother? Is there a motion?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. We are now ready to vote on item A.
Sharon, I'm a yes. This is Monica.
Received. Go down. Right here. Click that, and then go to view agenda. Click it.
Mine's came up.
It's a yes for me, Sharon, because I'm not.
Are you on the right day?
You're on the right time, the 3:30 meeting.
Let, let me just call those that I don't have, and you can give me your vote, if you don't mind. Dr. Linton Gary? It's a yes. And the only trustee Wilson?
What's your vote?
What's your vote?
Okay, received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Item B, ratify approval of letter of support for Dr. Prieta Venable-Starworth regarding position on Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT Board of Directors. Is there a motion? Any discussion on this item?
I just had a question on that financial support. Is that, I mean, are they, are they allowed so many meetings, or is it just one per year for that one?
Actually, they, actually, they cover the cost of the meetings that I'm required to attend.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, voting is open. Are you on special meeting?
He's, no, he's still on the regular meeting. Okay, there you go. Okay, there you go.
I'm gonna fix it for you. Leave it alone.
Voting has, voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. This special meeting of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees will now adjourn to close, such, close our executive session under the Texas Government Code, Section As stated in the notice of this meeting, should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in the closed meeting, such final action, vote, or decision shall be taken up in the open session portion of
3:50 PM.
Those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to this session with the WebEx link provided.
It's now. Five fifty-nine P. M.
One second. The Committee of the whole meeting for January tenth, twenty twenty-four will now come to order at.
Six o'clock P. M.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. No citizens are signed up to speak before the Committee of the whole. Topics for discussion and our action. Is there a motion to approve item A Monthly Investment Report Financial Statement and Budget Review for November twenty twenty-three?
They're moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved and second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Trustee, Madam Chair and Trustees. This item presents the Monthly Investment Report Financial Statement and Budget Review for November two thousand twenty-three. With your permission, Madam Chair, I will ask Senior Vice Chancellor Hines to come to the podium and present the report.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, Trustees. Start on the monthly financial report and tonight we'll talk about not only the investments but our operating statements as well as our budget review year-to-date. HCC continues to perform in an outstanding fashion on level of financial performance. We are in an envious financial position, an envious physical plant position, and excellent offering of programs, faculty, and the market in which we live and work is incredible. And we do have worthy competitors that we need to monitor and we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight. I did want to open up with some news that normally I would present during the budget presentation, but I just heard this a little while ago that we finally on the, if you recall, talking about dual credit strategies and programs that we've been working with. The new funding model and so the state finally has made a decision. We received this afternoon late a number that we will receive two point two million dollars in fast payments for the fall semester. And if you remember for our budgets, we added four million dollars worth of those fast payments. Their their sticking point was they told us finally that we have sixty-three percent of our dual credit students are eligible for early lunch or discounted lunch at in high school. It only takes one semester to qualify for the four years that they're in high school. And so we know now know what we have, we can't have their individual information until now. And so we will now be paid for that and the only caveat we have is in that the state just ruled on this is that we now have to have with some students out there from other ISDs that have gone out and purchased their materials on their own. We have to create a letter to send to them saying you can't pay for any of your dual credit and, you know, we'd like to refund you your money for your credit, but we will get fifty-five dollars per credit hour per our students. And as of right now for the fall semester, we had about sixty-five percent of those students that qualified, so big win for us finally came through. So with that, I'll begin the financial report. So as we look at the major focuses, particularly for as we go into the budget process, looking at recruitment, enrollment, financial aid, retention, student success and measurement, marketing. If we do all these things correctly, we are doing great things for our colleges, we're doing great things for our communities, and we're also bringing in revenue to help support the operations of this college. And you look at the main revenue sources, ad valorem taxes, which we'll talk more about. A lot of what I'm going to cover here, I'll go more a little more quickly because we've covered a lot during the budget presentation and workshop. Tuition fees, state appropriations, investment earnings, and you see down there, and it's always fun to see these each month. We're in the month of November, so we're one quarter into the new fiscal year, we're twenty-five percent through the new fiscal year. And so all these numbers I'll be showing you, if you can think of those in terms of being one-fourth of the year completed already. But investment earnings for November twenty-three, we earned one point four two five million and we so far year-to-date, we've earned four point three one six million dollars and the weighted average return is five point zero three percent. So as with that month, we were still getting the above five, the rates have dropped a little bit on the treasury bills below five percent. Next page, you talk about the workshop, we had the first one on December sixth, this is the second one. And ad valorem taxes, you can see there's people now, if you've closed out the year and you pay your taxes at home on your property and you pay them for the end of the year, this is the prime time for revenue collection for the next ninety days at Houston Community College. And so for November of twenty-three, we had two hundred nine thousand dollars or point one percent, and that's on par with what we've collected in the past. All the big dollars will come in over the next ninety days or so. You see on the third bullet point, the tax base has grown, was two fifty-five, it's up to two eighty-six for twenty-four, that's what's been posted. We won't know until April again when they give us an estimate for the next tax year of twenty-four. Tuition fees collected, sixty-four point sixty-four point five percent came in through the fall semester as well as some of the payments for enrollment. And then you've got November comparing that to sixty-four million dollars, so we had a little over four million dollar increase there. Tuition fees collected for extended learning also up a little bit as well, a three point one percent increase. And the state appropriations, we've collected forty-seven point four percent, we've got our one payment, this fast payment that I just mentioned of two point two million dollars, that will come in the next couple of weeks or so. Unduplicated enrollment, you see fall twenty-three versus fall twenty-two. You look at our weighted average interest rate again, we're trying to continue to fight inflation, the feds are doing that. We didn't see an increase as we projected in the December of twenty-three calendar year and we don't expect to see any increases imminently coming into the new calendar year twenty-four. Year-to-date earnings for us so far, four point three two million dollars compared to one point nine eight million dollars last year at the same rate. You look at the actual total operating expenses, we're at ninety-seven point nine million, which is at twenty-four point six percent of the total we budgeted. So we are exactly four tenths of one percent away from being at twenty-five percent. So we're right on the spot where we need to be on that. Actual salaries were fifty-nine point five million and twenty-four point nine percent, employee benefits at seven point two because of inflation a little bit higher than compared to last year. Again, I focus a little bit on the the pre-COVID environment. So we've had historically been funding about ten million dollars a year, that's what we put into this budget. We've released this year since we know we're going to have a good financial year already based on what we're seeing. Four million of the ten million dollars that we've committed on this budget to come out of fund balance and we've been doing that for four and a half years now. The West Loop campus, we've got a project going on that has our last, HERF project, it's a special one for a minority serving institution and it is for the student services area. And it will be coming up for approval, I believe, at the twenty-fourth meeting in January. Dual credit strategy and waivers, you know, what this means for us is, I just mentioned that we had sixty-five percent of our students are qualified for the free or discounted lunch program. That means when we actually sit down with some of our partners that have been having us waive all these fees for the students, we're starting out with a position that they're not now looking at a hundred percent ask, they're going to be looking at maybe a thirty-five percent ask. We have a better strategy by winning some one dollars from the new HBA program and so that will be helpful in our discussions with them. We also, the last bullet point there, we've implemented a travel moratorium has been activated unless it's critical or you're speaking or presenting or you're accepting an award on behalf of HCC. So another attempt to be a little bit more conscious about our operating expenses. Going forward in twenty-four, remember we had budgeted sixty-eight point five million, that two point two is half of what we budgeted above what we're guaranteed to get. So we're halfway there and with spring, we hope to have the other half come in on that, if not a little bit more in summer as well. Also student success, the state appropriation revenues helps us on that. Number one initiative, a very large complex team project, you have a lot of people in this room that are leading teams that are much larger, larger, that we work on all these different issues that we've talked about in the board meeting today already. And then the leadership that goes forward, you know, our faculty is so important to our success as well. Talk a little bit about the economic environment, the CPI rose point three percent, so it's flattening out nicely, we seem to have avoided a recession, at least the feds think so. General trend going the last quarter was that they weren't going to raise any rates and that's played out for us. The Bureau of Labor Statistics are still, we're expecting about a four percent increase for the fiscal year just ended and there's been no changes in the national rating of our country's money. Gold has been interested, it's a little above two thousand dollars, I think this morning I looked at it as I wrote a few notes here and it was at two thousand thirty dollars. Crude's a little concerning, it was about to drop through seventy dollars and that's been a benchmark for us for a few years now that that's what keeps a lot of the oil companies active. And so if we start dropping into the sixty range or the fifty range, that will start impacting what we see in our tax, ad valorem taxes because prices will probably start to drop. Thirty-year home mortgages are still at seven percent, which is pretty stout for most buyers. The U.S. unemployment rate was three point seven percent, down from three point nine in Houston, we're at four point one. And Social Security just announced a three point two percent cost of living adjustment for their Social Security payments. So those are all kind of benchmarks that we look at to try to forecast what's going on with that. I would like to take you up to our revenue, this is in the appendix on page twelve. If you just start at the top, these are, you know, our top four revenue is state appropriations. As I said, we got our first big payment was forty-seven percent, so we have collected almost the first half of the year in that first payment. Ad valorem tax, you're not going to see anything for another month or so and then you'll start seeing pouring in. And the tuition fees net, you see we collected sixty-four point five percent of the budget already and then you look at other local income, that's the interest earnings. We're at budget five million dollars, we're at five point four million already, so we're going to have another great year in interest earnings to go with this. And then at the bottom, you see the total revenue, fund balance, transfers, et cetera, we're at twenty-nine percent, so pretty close to where we're supposed to be at twenty-five percent at this time of year. And just quickly on operating expenses, look at salaries, which is the biggest part of our budget, two hundred thirty-six million dollars, we're at twenty-four point. We're at 24.9%. So we're right at 25%. Supplies and general expense, we're close to 25%. Travel, as I mentioned, is only at 9, so we're seeing that drop. Marketing will be timing, you know, as we do more marketing costs, you'll see that. Rentals and leases, you know, we have coming in still, it's always a little bit later in the year. Insurance and risk management, as you've read about in newspapers or maybe personally experienced, insurance rates are going up. And we are experiencing the same thing, even though we have great statistics to show them. Otherwise, our rates would be even higher. Utilities, they're very seasonal. Typically, your highest months are, you know, the hot months, so it's June through September, October, are when the big dollars are spent. You see that a little bit lower right now. Maintenance repair, it's at the same low level it is right now. Then you look at capital outlays and transfer in debt, that's for the HERF money that I was talking about earlier. So, that was a quick walkthrough of the report. And as I mentioned, a lot of what's in here, we will be rehashing through the budget workshop.
Any questions, trustees? Trustee Chieven and then trustee Laredo.
Quick question on slide 12. When would you expect that we would see the impact of tuition in these reports? I know with higher enrollment, we would expect higher tuition. Just curious when we would see that in something like this?
Oh, we'll see is, if you look at the tuition fees, that 68 million dollars is part from the full payment and collection of the fees for the fall semester. But already, there's multiple entry points for enrollment during the fall, as well as into the spring, even later enrollment, and same thing in summer. So that combination goes into 68 million dollars. We're already seeing the impact of that.
I guess, quick follow-up. I mean, with the higher enrollment we talked about earlier for a spring semester, would that show up in a report like this in February or March? Or like, when would we just start to see how big of a surplus that line item would result in?
We'll see probably by the end of February. We'll have closed out most of the enrollment periods for the spring. And then probably past, you know, the surge, purge day, you know, just happened. So you'll see that show up shortly. And also, just again, we offer a program that a student can pay 30 dollars as a down payment. We don't want them to drop out, but that's an incentive for them, and then they can pay it out over time. Or they can pay 20% of their tuition bill, I think a cap's at 150, and then they can pay that over time. So as those come in, that may, again, stretch those income levels or revenue levels throughout the semester. Thank you.
Trustee Laredo.
Thank you for using that HERF fund for your students, to help the students out with their tuition and fees. And now I see that we, when can we see the scholarship distribution start?
And she's what?
Scholarship distribution on here, on the expenses. It says we have this amount, 690,000.
Right.
So when can, when can we start seeing that go to students?
We use that when we can't find other ways to fund, whether it's grants, Pell Grants, et cetera, then that's the kind of a last resort for people that don't follow those categories. So that's, it's not a big number relative to what we give out. But we get, you know, the Pell Grants and all the other programs that go forward, those go first. And that'll come on as we go further into the spring semester.
So is that for students that can't afford to pay, to pay their fees? Is this like another scholarship way for them?
It can be. But most of the time, we try to, the Financial Aid Group is very good at finding ways to fund or piece together different grants and funding sources and scholarships. And even the foundation participates in that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, trustee Wilson?
On page 5. The last line about a travel moratorium?
Yes, sir.
You know, I wonder, Madam Chair, if, you know, usually you lead by example, but it looks like the administration is trying to tell us something. Maybe we should put a travel moratorium or some limitations on the trustees and their travel expenses. That wasn't a good suggestion.
That travel is critical.
You know, trustee Wilson, I think that's something we really do need to discuss. Because I'm limiting myself personally on travel, because I've attended some conferences that were not beneficial for me, or for me to come back and share the wealth of information that I didn't receive. So I'm going to put a limit on myself. I can't, we can't put a limit on you guys unless we all agree. And we need to consider how much monies we are spending on travel. But there, but there, absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
The new trustees need the same new trustee training. My training, I guess because I was new, the training was very good to me. I enjoyed it, maybe because it was redundant for you.
Well, see, that's my point.
I learned a lot, especially from HCT. Those are the ones we, I really learned. And the one we had in New Orleans, where it was just, where you sit down and talk with other trustees and you learn about, oh, they have the same issues we do, and how did you solve that? Oh, and this is what happened at this campus, and this is how you prevent it. So that's what I got out of that.
I agree. See, that's a beneficial conference. And it's beneficial, like you say, for you because you were so new. But I had attended, and I'm like, I shouldn't repeat. Like I said, it's a personal choice. Any other comments? Okay.
I have a comment.
Oh, trustee.
Yeah, they're very beneficial, and you do a lot of networking and get ideas and bring back to, you know, even our presidents, you know, when they've gone to some of these conferences, you know, I see that they're really excited in bringing back information. But we did, at one time, we did have a limit of five conferences. And then we had like, and I think that we probably need to look at them again, because you have national, and then you have these local ones. And so, you know, we have to look at it again.
Yeah, that's what I think we should talk about it as a board. If there's not any additional questions, thank you for that presentation, Marshall.
Thank you.
We're now ready to vote on item A.
Concluded. The motion passed with a vote of 7 to 0.
We will begin with item B, FY 2025 Budget Workshop Number Two, Overview of Budget Philosophy and Financial Trends. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item presents the fiscal year 2025 Budget Workshop Number Two, as you indicated, with an overview of the budget's preparation philosophy and financial trends. So with your permission, Madam Chair, once again, I'll ask Mr. Heinz to please come to the podium and present.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, trustees, again. So we have a three-part presentation today. One is the budget presentation itself, one is a master plan snapshot for the campus working into, the system working into the presentation. And then also, we have a information technology presentation. Do you have a timeline you would like us to stay within? Okay, quickly, okay. Okay.
That's all I could say.
I just wanted to check. So just, I just, the only thing I want to show you here is that the bottom line of our vision statement that, you know, is, the world is changing around us, you know, our vision can remain the same. However, how we accomplish that vision changes, and that we're going to have to continue to evolve. And every month, every six months, something changed. The announcement I made to you earlier, that's something new. That's a new game for us to talk about dual credit. So, you know, you've got something going on constantly. Just reminding you that we're here today in January for the budget workshop. And again, I want to talk through some things that are important. I'll go through these real, a little bit slower. So historical versus revised major capital need management. Typically, my experience in my tenure at HCC, large major purchasers or expenses were brought to the board with recommendations to be approved, and they were paid for out of a fund balance. And never with the amount of money we have in fund balance today. And we have an envious, as I said, financial position and strength. Major operating expenses, as I've called these for this presentation, you know, expenses could be, or need to be, budgeted surplus. You know, we created, I just have brought them up here, you know, the first four bullet points. The last year '23, we had a 50 million dollar plus surplus. Year before that, about 40. A year before that, about 40. And then about 16, I think, and 20. So we've had a really good run. We managed COVID well, we managed HERF well. But that after GAZB, we, all of those numbers are net of after we already made our adjustment in writing, 90 dollars for the GAZB adjustments. And then, if you think about that money, instead of it flowing directly to the fund balance, we'd like to present during these budget meetings, you know, the items that we have that we think are the highest priority to the college. So different way to look at it. So our major operating expenditures require action that we need to really focus on. Our information technology, which you'll hear a little bit about today. We have some technology that's fairly aged, and we need to start doing something about it. Last year, we brought forth a budget amendment. We had a big surplus. It didn't pass, so now we're another year into that. And this is for the next budget year. And I'm hoping that that's something that the board will consider this year, because we're going to have a surplus as well. And then you look at safety and security. And you heard some of that presentation tonight about risk management. All of these things in safety and security, it's not just the doors, it's not just the lights, it's the code blue phones out in the parking lots. We have some colleges and campuses that have them and some that don't. We have lighting systems that need to be replaced, that, you know, that those are things that we can do on a schedule, but we start with it. And then we have a website replacement, which is coming up shortly, I think in February. We're through with the recommendation on that and the procurement of that. Deferred maintenance, you know, is a big balance, you know, could we contribute more money with the surpluses that we're having? So we've got an exceptional balance and fund balance, which I don't think is a bad idea because, you know, we don't know what the future brings for HCC. And we may have an opportunity. Like I said, we have some really good competitors here locally, and we enter a market that's really strong. So people change and do things differently all the time. And something changes in your world and your environment, and you have to be able to react. You have to have to be negotiating and working from a position of strength and not one of weakness. Days cash on hand, we have 289 million dollars days cash on hand. That equals 350 days. The requirement, which is already over the, most colleges have, is 180 days per our policy, 148 million dollars. Budget major operation expenditures is what I'm suggesting we discuss in these next couple of meetings. That way, we don't come and ask for fund balance money. We try to fund what we spend and what we need during each year. Recent high interest rate life expectancy, you know, we don't know if that's going to be another 18 months, seven months, or two years. And let's make, take advantage of that while we're here. And then we have a little tiny balance left in the 2013 CIP. And we either need to use some of that or to go ahead and pay down some of that principal and pay some of that money back. We're not losing money on it. We're earning interest on it, but we're having, we can't, we can't make a profit on it. I've got quite a few charts. I'll go through these fairly quickly, but the operating budget, this is just showing you the major categories. I just went through them in paper format for you, so you can see again the benefits, you know, abhorrent tax for revenue, not by far our number one for '24 expense, but also our number one revenue for abhorrent tax, and then salaries being our budget. Then you look at 17% for state appropriations, and you see that benefits are 9%. So you can kind of read the chart. I won't belabor that tonight. There's quite a few of these bicycle chain graphs pulling out of the pie chart. We're talking about the abhorrent taxes. We're already the lowest, or second lowest in the state in terms of rate. I've got another chart that shows that even better for you. It compares us to other colleges. But at the same time, as you'll see in here, we're the lowest tuition. We're the lowest fees. We're the lowest in a lot of things, and we're the highest in exemptions for homes and things like that. And I'm not up here trying to sell you that we need to collect more money from the citizens of Harris County. I'm here to tell you that we have an opportunity to take care of some of these larger expenses that we have while times are in a good economy for us. The tuition fees, again, we're not recommending an increase. The only thing that we'd like to look at, and we have been studying, is differential tuition. So if you have a class that's English or Spanish or writing, you know, versus something that's a, you know, a dental hygienist, you know, the ratio for staff on dental hygienists might be two students per faculty member. They have a lot of disposable cost per class. You know, you have the different equipment, they have huge capital investments. But it's also one of our greatest investment opportunities in the Texas Medical Center, in the medical program. So it's a program that we want to grow, we want to be successful. And we have two beautiful buildings there. It's a landmark for HCC. This shows you the tuition fee rate trends going back to 2015 on the top blue line for the fall semester. And then you see the current in district rate of 2015, it says 815. You can follow that across, and you don't see really any adjustment until 2020. So you had five years before there was an adjustment there, regardless of inflation or the CPI change, which is just below that. And then you go to fiscal year '21, the college, I'm sorry, 20, the fiscal year '20, fall semester in '20, 1,020, and that's where we've been since then in '24. So now we're going on to our fourth year this year. And '25 would be our fifth year without an adjustment for the tuition. And you see the red, that shows that where we should be if we were adjusting per the inflation that we're seeing. And then you can look at the current out-of-district. And we're at, you can see, also had a rate change in '21 to 2172. And we are short in '23, 46. And then the current out-of-state, which is a smaller portion, and you sign the little key down there, is 14%. It's still doing good where it's at. So that's just something to think about as we talk about where we are collectively and what we collect in revenue and how we collect it. The fact that we're in a really great economy and a really great region with a great tax base, and we're doing well, and our enrollment's growing, you can't, and you don't want to shut down enrollment growth. And then revenue's going to grow naturally and organically as enrollment goes up. More dollars are coming in this year. And this year will be several million dollars more, and last year was several million dollars more. You know, and then you look at your tax base, that's going to go up again. You look at your state appropriations, if we're successful, which we will be. You just heard me talk about dual credit, that's only a small piece of it. The big dollars, if we want to get a capture like Lone Star did and Alamo College, you're talking 20 million dollars a year. What do you do with those funds that we can spend to do something for the community as well as for the student population? State appropriations, this is going to, again, just shows you where we are today, and we've talked about that. We've all, we'll see the graph here again in a minute, and I sent it out on the TI request a couple of days ago, the chart that shows us, and we were at 270,000. And Alamo, the one that's supposedly the greatest at managing that model, who started it years ago, though, it's not going to happen overnight. You know, they had 20 million dollars more in one year increase. Local investments, again, you know, we're not going to stop investing our money. You've got to do something with it. And putting it into fund balance serves a purpose to a point. Salaries and benefits, again, we've been pretty flat in the total number of employees, even though, and faculty, even though enrollment is increasing. We haven't seen a big jump in that. We are seeing a little bit in the benefits for employees going up with inflation. And we talked about COLA adjustments and what that means. So this year, that's the reason I threw Social Security in there, going up is a good benchmark for 3.2% for the CPI. Repairs and maintenance strategy, one, we've got the dual credit issue, but you see down there at the bottom again, IT. again, IT, safety and security, website completion. Looking at operating expenses, philosophy, contract services, professional services, insurance, structural, supplies, equipment, utilities. We're seeing inflation, just like inflation, just like everybody else's in things that we buy. And whether we're buying it, we have our maintenance costs, we have school supplies, fees. Now we're going to look at some comparisons that I think are interesting to let you look at what the other colleges are doing. So this is a total revenue enrollment, and we only use our large urban peers. These are large colleges that exist in a large city. So if you look at the first chart, it's total revenue per year unrestricted, and you see Lone Star up at 324, you see HCC at 345. Total revenue unrestricted, total dollars collected. If you go to the large urban peer on the right screen, total revenue per enrollment, you see us spending $4,072. Now, this does not include debt service payments, this is just the revenues that are coming in. And you see the ranking there in terms of enrollment. I think that was one of the TI questions the trustee had. Abhorrent tax revenue, this is a big one that we talk about every year. And the chart on the left, you see Houston Community College in the yellow, large urban community tax, abhorrent tax in millions, $181 million for Houston Community College in the yellow. Large urban community college, abhorrent tax per enrollment, you see us move over one notch, but we're still, you know, not even in the median of what the other four colleges, which are Tarrant, Austin, Alamo, and Dallas. And Alamo is the college that's crushing it on the performance on the state appropriations in House Bill 8. So you can see the difference in the dollars that are being spent. This is another interesting chart, exemptions and abhorrent tax rates. And I'll start at the, the bottom center slide, where we talk about the total tax rate. Houston Community College is at the top at .09. You look at Alamo, they're at .149. That's because they don't have near the tax base that we have. You know, San Antonio, where they are, does not have the development, it's not the size of Houston, it doesn't have the density that Houston has, it doesn't have the value in the business that Houston has. We're in a very unique place. Austin, similar, because they have all the tech, they've been growing, prices are crazy there in terms of homing. Austin Community College, you know, at .09%. But then you see Dallas at .11, Lone Star at almost 11 at .1007, and then you've got San Jac at .15, and Tarrant County at 1.3. And then you can see at the top chart, we'll start on the homestead line. Last year, we were successful with the board. We jumped from 15% to 17% for homestead exemptions to help out homeowners. We went to the homestead amount, was up $5,000. We made the over 65 exemption, $135,000, the largest of any of our large urban peers. Disabled is also at $135,000. So you see the difference again there, that we're collecting more tax, we're recognizing how strong our base is, but we're not trying to penalize the taxpayers that own homes. We just need to be able to spend the money where it needs to be spent to promote HCC and success for our students, but also success for our communities. So on the left margin, this, HCC is a great education value for students. We've showed you that in terms of the rate for tuition and fees. We showed you that in terms of what we charge for taxes and what we collect. HCC grab great value for taxpayers and return on their investment. If you look at the manpower that HCC contributes, you think of all the people that work in Houston, Texas, that have to have education training, all of our new certificates of value, workforce. The Texas Medical Center is just one, oil industry is another, there's, we've got tech now. They need workforce, we're helping provide that workforce. So that's their return on their investment. HCC could expend additional funds for students to improve student success. We're going to have to have more focus on lifting this whole ship to get our student success better, so we had to collect all those payable events. Tuition fee, district, large urban peers, it just shows tuition fee rates in district only, and you can see that Houston Community College were the third from the top. And then the large urban, the college state appropriations, you can see us in the large urban peers on the left side, right at the median, and then just shorter the median on the, the state appropriations per enrollment. And, and that to me is the slide that's most frustrating, but it offers, offers me the most challenge that I would want to have, that I want to move us from the yellow at 872 per enrollment up to San Jacinto, up to Tarrant County, up to Alamo, which is in green, and even Dallas County, the money they get paid from the state to spend on their college. And that's where our biggest pickup is going to be in the future. Large urban peers, total expenses per student, total expenses, all funds. See our operating expenses, and we're, you know, in the, in the median area again on both. We're not overexpending. Look at Alamo on the right in green, you look at Austin Community College, and you look at Tarrant County, $7,000 per student enrollment, and we're at $4,000. So this is the end of this presentation in preparation for next month, is to establish and present enrollment. You'll see the enrollment team come up here, several people, and Andrew Burridge leading that team, and do strategies, projections, and targets about where we're going to go with enrollment. And then we have to review and select and decide that we're going to have a tuition fee, dual credit, waiver, continue that model. And then the last button on the right is first overview of the budget forecast. You'll see for the first time next month, a chart that you normally see where you see the revenues at the top, the expenses in the middle, and the bottom line at the bottom. And I think everybody feels comfortable and is used to that chart, except for our new trustees. So our chief facility officer is out with COVID and flu both with three little kids, and so I'm here in Hursted to run you through a very abbreviated facilities master plan. We want to align with Houston, and as I mentioned in my opening remarks, we have a fantastic physical plant. It covers a lot of square footage of space, but it also covers 600 miles, square miles of Houston, Texas. And they're in good shape, they're, look nice, they're attractive. We have good interior finishes on it and good furniture fixtures and equipment and IT that is for the students. We need some work on the infrastructure. Projects were capitalized in following sections, active capital projects, capital improvement projects, development and design, deferred maintenance. The plan outlines current projects of importance, needs and names to deploy a multi-year system-wide facilities master plan. As you saw in your, your TI response yesterday, we have a, a spatialization study that's done, we have a facility condition assessment that's done, both of those are still current and usable. The first one is from 2019, but still meaningful. We also have a full-blown system master plan that we finished last year for the whole system. Didn't want to burden, that's not the purpose of this meeting. We know we don't need to build any new buildings right now that are out in the, the community. We need to have a focus where we have our focus, workforce is one area. Like I said, the, also the space utilization we have. I think if you study that, we can grow and be successful at what we do. And this is just a quick little graphic that starts with the financial efficiency. That was another question on the TI that came out to me about financial efficiency. You know, we, we're not planning, you know, a huge building program or anything. There's a couple of spaces where we do need to make some decisions on workforce or automotive and things like that, repurposing acres homes, or just to name a few. And I just picked those off the top of my head. But HCC requires little or no physical space within the minimal exception, with minimal exceptions, the current plan focused on repurposing and redeployment. And you've heard discussions about moving more academic programs out to Coleman as well, so they have a bigger palette of courses to choose from. And again, we're following the master plan that is done to have a 10-year vision for us. And we've got that forward. I don't want to waste your time with that. And then these are projects, you can read these on your own. This is just what's going on, that it's totally currently in process moving forward, and there are several pages of these. So deferred maintenance, I, I won't belabor this either. You know, we started out with a little over $400 million, we've paid about $42 million onto that. We've got another six to spend this year that's already been budgeted along with the other four that we just released. So it'll, we'll continue to drive it down, but the other way to drive it down is by, we sold Fox Lake Campus and saved $15 million off of that and had deferred maintenance, demolishing the retail center at Woodbridge. That takes another $16 million off of the, of the balance there. We sold an old warehouse, and we took our, our new warehouses and converted them from empty storage to actually lease them out to tenants that work in the medical center and, and serve them. And so now it's a moneymaker for us. So there are opportunities to play with that. And then this is a list of deferred maintenance priorities that are currently in progress. And they tie, we're following the facility condition assessment. And I'm going to stop here and so we don't have to switch back and forth. What's behind me is the IT report, which is also about a five-minute presentation. So if there's any questions for me, I apologize for talking really fast, but y'all should wrap it up quick. So I'm going to take a sip of water unless y'all ask any questions.
I'll be brief. On, what's our average bond interest we're paying on our debt? Is, you know, that 5.03 is the interest we're getting paid on our savings?
It, it, it's miniscule compared to that. I won't give you an exact number tonight, but it's probably half, less than half of that.
No need to pay any bonds off, is there?
No, sir. We, we do have an opportunity, if the rates ever come down on bonds, we have another small little tranche we've identified that we could take off some principal balance and reduce our debt service that we pay if the bonds will come back down to the rates, so we can do that again. That was a good deal for us a couple of years ago.
On page 11, with the in-district tuition at $1,020, and 51% at the bottom, is that the number of students that pays $1,020, or is that the revenue we receive from in, in district?
The, the blue, the blue header, the little box that says current versus strategy impact, and it says in-district 51%, that's the number, that's our student breakdown, 51% are in district, 35% are out of district, 14 are out of state.
Oh, at 51%, whatever that number is, it's paying $1,020. How does it compare to 35% paying $2,172? What I'm wondering is, are we getting more revenue from out of district than in district?
That was going to be for the next budget workshop, but I, I will share some of the thoughts with that. If you look at that, you're paying almost double if you're out of district. And I mentioned our worthy competitors that are around us. They are building on our borderlines and taking students that may have crossed over to our colleges and campuses, had it not been for that being out of district for them. So we need to do a study with the board's permission to look at, are we better off becoming more affordable for out of district because we're losing those students that we could have? And, 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 you know, if you think about it, a lot of the students that are coming to HCC from out of district, they're not paying taxes anyway. Maybe their parents are, maybe they're on their own, maybe they're, you know, if we have our normal target cohort that we're targeting, they should already be out of the house and working. You know, they're paying income tax, but they're not probably yet owning homes yet, is my point. And so the study to see, should they, should we have that much variation between in district and out of district?
That's what I was getting at.
Yes, sir. That's a good.
And, you know, everybody's aware of that poacher community college north of us. And, okay.
I, I will mention too, the chancellor and I talked about this, I think just yesterday, you know, the other poacher that's south, there's a new development, it's not new, I remember looking when they were building it, but Generation Park, you know, it's, it's, it's doing really well, it's a really nice campus, and it's right there on our border pretty much, so.
You mentioned that our tax rate was one of the lowest, if it's not the lowest. But what's our tax base? I mean, how do we compare with the other community college? Is it one of the largest ones?
Absolutely not, no shame, there's no shame there. That's why I tell you, we live in a community that we should be happy we live here and be thankful because the other, you think about somebody, and if you read about the problem New Oasis County was having with Delmore College, they had two major chemical plants that protested their taxes, and with their big lawyers, you know, they had, their tax rate went up from like a billion dollars each to like $6 billion or something like that. And they said, we're not paying it. And so we're not even, we're not, we're going to protest it, and we're not going to pay it until we have to. That college had to back up and recast their budget because they lost their two largest revenue producers in that tiny, and that Corpus Christi is in that, I think, New Oasis County.
And so we do have the largest tax base in the state?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Okay. One of the things that I'd like to mention to the board and to the public is the fact that I have a, since we're in budgeting, I'm interested in the healthcare and moving in that direction and getting the board to appropriate more money for healthcare so we can grow that program. That's one of my pet projects, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Matt and Chair.
I agree with you.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Any other questions or comments? You can't, they can't hear you.
I was asking, were high school students eligible to take the one CNA certificate of value as well? Because it wasn't listed in our, in our marketing documents. So that would be great to have that to distribute.
Thank you so much.
Phil's nodding, yes.
Any other question?
Yeah, my question has to do with the deferred maintenance that you referenced.
Yes, sir.
Do we have some understanding of what investment and addressing those deferred maintenance items might do to offset our OpEx as, as far as those assets or buildings are concerned?
We, we don't, you know, our, myself and our facilities group, we know all the technologies that are out there, we belong to organizations, and I've spent 30 years in that industry, that there are way great things we could do to be energy conservation. We are turning the lights out when we can. The problem is that we are a full-service college, so we're open seven days a week and very long extended hours every day. And so that's what's running the cost up. And until we have our buildings put back in place, we're still putting on new roofs with this money that we're asking for in deferred maintenance and windows and caulking. We're trying to make sure we don't have any deterioration of our structure before we would even remotely be able to look at, you know, expensive, you know, like solar panels or, you know, electric cars and things. Some of them have funding, some of them have grant opportunities, but we still have to put the roofs on and things before they come out and, and start doing those type of things. But yes, sir, that's what, those are opportunities.
So it sounds like the deferred maintenance is not increasing the cost to operate the buildings based on which, how you've just described it?
Correct. We're still running them as efficiently as we can, but the problem is we run long hours, seven days a week, and our libraries are there, they're accessible to the community. We're just a full-service organization with a big footprint.
If I can just put a final point, what I'm trying to understand, if we made investments to reduce that deferred maintenance backlog,
Yes.
do we believe will achieve cost savings in the annual operating expenses for those buildings? Because if we have that kind of information that can help you weigh your investment decision relative to your cost savings. So I'm not talking about turning off lights, I get that. Now, I, I don't think that's a deferred maintenance item, there might be a building efficiency improvement item to say, hey, we need to put programmatic lights that we can remotely turn on and off, I get that. But I don't think that's a deferred maintenance item. So I'm just trying to understand, what are the deferred, what's the impact of the deferred maintenance essentially on our OpEx? That's the question I'm trying to get to.
Yes, sir. So having the deferred maintenance on the OpEx is probably not that significant. We haven't measured that yet. But you're correct that if we had all the buildings on a state-of-the-art, you know, building control system for lighting systems, and we had all of them lamped, you know, properly, and we had, you know, everyone had the new elevator system that has the computerized calling, so some of the old mechanical systems, when we do these replacements, we're doing them at the highest new energy-efficient technology. All of, like, for example, HVAC systems, when we replace those, or chillers and boilers or roof units, we're using the new technology to do that. So as we're doing deferred maintenance, we're, we're accomplishing pieces of it at a time, but we still have so much money that's still being spent on the basics. But we're not losing extra money because of deferred maintenance.
Probably veering a little bit into the IT five-minute topic. But do we have an opportunity to bundle larger scopes of work together? From, from the materials, it looks like we're incrementally five, ten million a year. Just kind of scratching at this, can we knock out an entire scope? Like I mentioned, I saw that there's I think forty or fifty million dollars worth of switch replacements due to obsolescence. Could we staff up, get crews so that they can knock it out in a factory mindset and hopefully drive per unit cost down? And then we get a big chunk of this obsolescence compliance type work out of the way when times are good and we've got these, these interest rate windfalls. Similarly, if we're replacing HVAC units, can we buy fifty of them? And then have a crew just line them up and knock them out and do so in hopefully a more efficient manner to bring our unit costs down? Is that, is that either something that you've looked at? Or is that something that you could bring to the board in future budget workshops?
We, we've looked at it. It certainly can be done. Other organizations do that. But one of the things that we don't have the benefit of is again, you know, other than the holiday times that were closed, we're open all the time. So starting a major project not during a ten-day holiday like at Christmas or at spring break is very, just intrusive to the organization and the campus. You know, now we could maybe start switching classes, you know, if somebody's, but that runs into a whole nother issue of asking faculty members to relocate and materials and audio visual and those type of things. Thank you. I'm going to introduce Farrell Prestige. She is our chief information officer and she's going to give you a very quick report on the status of IT infrastructure.
Thank you, Marshall. Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees and chancellor. Thank you for the opportunity to present and share information regarding our information technology preliminary infrastructure replacement plan. I promise you that I only have a few slides, so if you'll indulge me. The initial slide that I will get to here. Okay, here we are. And so the initial slide that I, that I'm presenting here is with respect to the overview. And I'd like to share that from an information technology standpoint, our replacement plan uses, we've incorporated best practices and it's in alignment with cybersecurity requirements as well. We follow NIST practices for cybersecurity. And as well, we use ISO and ICE practices, twenty-seven hundred in keeping with just general international best practices. Additionally, I'd like to share that our network infrastructure equipment, the current status and the historical acquisition and funding, I'll share some brief information with regard to that. In addition to that, I'll share forecasted information technology replacement plans, the requirements that we have there that would permit us to address ongoing EOL or an end of life and end of service needs. There we go. Okay. So with regard to our current technology replacement cycle and best practices, and again, I share that we use IT-accepted industry best practices. Typically, network equipment for replacement cycle is between seven to ten years of useful life. And then server replacements are typically five years of useful life. And last but not least, our computer replacements are typically four years of useful life. ACC needs to actively manage the IT infrastructure replacement plan to remain efficient and resilient with proper cybersecurity protection. I'll show you in just a minute in our next slide, giving you some reference of where we are and the usefulness, the useful life that we've used incorporated for our current infrastructure. And so for our current IT network infrastructure, roughly sixty-six percent of our network switches require replacement by October thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And as they've approached the end of their support lifecycle, which relatively means that this moves us into a, a period of time where we will not be able to have the vendor provide us support for maintenance and repair. And we won't have parts to replace for those switches. We have sixty-six percent that are nearing that end of lifecycle. The replacement of network switches necessitates a substantial upfront investment, followed by years of minimal ongoing expenditures. And that cost is cyclical, as you will see in some of the future slides. In about two thousand and nine, we had a large investment. And then ten years later, nine to ten years later, we started having some additional investments to cover all of the switches. And as the time has gone on, we've had increased numbers of switches because we've also had increased sites that we've incorporated and enhancements to sites that currently exist. Utilizing the unsupported network equipment in our ACC environment greatly increases fraudulent risk of elevated hardware failures, and it also introduces security vulnerabilities. And so in keeping again with our cybersecurity concerns, we'd like to be able to utilize equipment to the greatest extent, but of a useful, of useful life, but also not to extend past the point of having the ability to provide support and maintenance on the equipment. Now, this slide is included to illustrate and share the number of switches that we have currently with the building sites and locations that we have. And we have roughly a total of three hundred and four. And of the three hundred and four, we have at this juncture about two hundred and twenty-nine that need to be replaced. We replace sixty-five of those between fiscal year twenty and twenty-three. And again, here on the chart, you can see that we had an increase at the fiscal year in two thousand and nine. And then as we came into the pandemic period, twenty nineteen, we didn't have any replacements. We had some smaller opportunities for replacements to try to sure up the numbers of repairs that we had or that we had needed. Currently for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six respectively, we need to replace a hundred and twenty-one that will be end of life and end of service. And then in the ensuing fiscal years, twenty-five and twenty-six, we have seventy-eight and then thirty. And with regard to a previous question about our ability to maybe bundle some of those things, some of it, as Marshall stated, has more to do with the timing that we have. Much of this work we do on weekends and holidays so as not to disrupt the business and the services of the institution. And so some of it starts to be, come into a capacity and time to complete issues. So that's why we've adjusted the schedule in this manner. And this next slide shares information regarding budgetary needs. Marshall spoke to the amounts that we had previously for a special request. And this, uh, this, uh, this slide also shows a budget surplus funding request that we're requesting if permissible for five point nine million that would allow us to address a number of those switches that I illustrated on the previous slide of the hundred and twenty-one. And to get us to a point that we can provide some replacement and save costs. We incur additional costs for those items that we attempt to, um, to prolong the use of. In some cases, we've used or made use out to an extent of fifteen to seventeen years. So we've gone way past the obsolescence of the equipment, but we've been able to find parts and to be able to manage and to, um, to be able to provide maintenance. But as we get to a point where the vendor no longer provides the parts, maintenance, maintenance or service or upgrades are provided, then it begins to not only become a costly adventure for us to support, but it also gets to a point that we start to have concerns with security and security risk. And so basically what we forecasted out here in the, in, in those years and previous years where if we didn't have sufficient funds to, uh, to provide maintenance for the number of switches that we had need for, what we would do is make certain that we addressed those that had the, uh, that were, uh, would approach end of life and end of service. And then those that had a little longer time that we could use because the vendor would still support them and we just moved them or cascade them to a, to the ensuing years. And so at this point, um, we're able to do that. But at some point, we get to the point of full use and obsolescence. And so that's the request for the one hundred and twenty-one at this point. And with that, that's the last slide that I have.
Any questions, trustees? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn the meeting, I would just like to congratulate trustee Davies and trustee Cheban one more time and welcome the board and said thank, and thank you guys for helping us get through a good meeting. The meeting is adjourned at?
Seven oh four PM.
All right.